I'm calling the meeting to order. Would you all please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pro 6-0. Items on the consent agenda. Would anyone wish to have any of those items removed?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, just, I passed out, the staff had passed out a couple of items on, items 3A and B, and would like to add something to the record for those.
Fine. The chairman is now here.
And while the chairman is being seated, I note that everything on the agenda tonight is quasi-judicial, so perhaps we could have anyone that's going to give testimony regarding any of these items tonight stand and be sworn in at this time?
I just ask if anybody wanted anybody, any of the items on the consent poll. Nobody's had a chance to respond. I want all three polled. Okay, does anybody else want to pull any of the other items?
I think they're already pulled.
I'd like all three pulled. Let's go for it. Steve, let me read the first one here. This is Oslo Properties, request for preliminary plat approval for 28 lot conventional, single-family subdivision to be known as Oslo Properties Residential Subdivision. Oslo Properties LLC owner, Shulki Biddle and Stoddard LLC agent, located at 913th Street Southwest between 13th Street Southwest and 11th Street Southwest, just east of 9th Court Southwest. Zoning classification RS6. Land use L2, low density up to 6 units per acre, density 2.92 units per acre. Steve?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, for both of these firsts to go over what staff has passed out in terms of additions to the report and the recommendations, and we apologize for this. We would normally put this sort of information in the report. There's no change to the preliminary plats, but I'll go over this first one. The Oslo Properties site. And staff's additions to what I've passed out on this particular item 3A is just a reference to the fact that the preliminary plat proposes, as required by the ordinance, a right-of-way dedication along 9th Court Southwest, as it runs along the west side of the site. And that's in the updated information. As well as a right-of-way dedication, for the ultimate right-of-way, the applicants agreed to do that, for 13th Street Southwest. And even though, again, the preliminary plat shows those dedications and accommodates those, we wanted those in the report and as a specific condition for the record on that particular item. And then we have a similar circumstance on item 3B, as in boy, now pack. And that is the next item on the agenda, 3B. And that is in regard to a dedication without compensation as well for the 20th Avenue frontage on the east side, along 20th Avenue, along the east side of this site, a 10-foot dedication without compensation. That's what's reflected in the corrected pages that have been passed out, and for the record, staff would like that added. So staff's recommendation on 3A and 3B is for approval with the added conditions.
Okay, any discussion? Yes, I had some questions on this application, although there's, my questions are somewhat generic and don't go to the merits of this proposal. The first one relates to their, there's going to be a proportionate share agreement here. Has the applicant agreed to sign it?
Sorry, is this item 3A?
We're on 3A.
And has this been executed, Stephen?
It has not been executed. They have, will have 12 months after the approval of the preliminary plat. But they have agreed to the numbers.
Well, I guess Bob or Stan, question, I'm, I saw this before recently. I'm surprised that, this is a major condition. Why is not the applicant required to sign it at this time? Or have agreed to sign it at this time and then be required to sign it upon approval by the county commission, assuming the county commissioner approves it reasonably promptly?
Actually, the applicant has agreed to sign it, and we've actually got it tentatively scheduled for the next board meeting.
Well, I'm going to the condition here that it be signed prior. Well, then can we change? It's supposed to be signed prior to the issuance of a land development permit, and that's what I'm focused on, as opposed to it being signed upon approval by the Board of Commissioners. Otherwise, you've got a condition here that hangs out there in an optional type of manner.
Actually, this condition is consistent with what we were recommending in 910 as the first point of vesting a project.
But I'm not, but I'm suggesting that since this is a major condition, it should be signed now. Or, particularly if he's agreed to sign it, then it's rather formality I'm dealing with.
Actually, the forma, it's not a formality, it's a check. It's a money issue. It's a pretty significant.
Perhaps he shouldn't have to pay the money, and, I mean, the payment of the money is one thing, the signing of the agreement.
No, they, we put him together. Not only does he have to pay his proportionate share amount, he has to pay all the rest of his impact fees, and he has to pay his water and sewer capacity charges.
What I'm getting to, Bob, is that's fine. It seems to me he should sign the agreement. Now, if it's unfair to have him pay the money, and the policy is to let him wait until land development permit time, I wouldn't object to that myself. But it seems to me a major condition should be fulfilled promptly. If the problem is you don't allow him to pay the fees, it's a very easy thing to provide. He doesn't have to pay the fees until subsequent date.
No, he needs to pay the fees to get concurrency, and that's what the agreement does, is give him concurrency. And what we did is we, we're recommending a condition that the concurrency be in place, that he have a concurrency approval at the time that it's appropriate. And I think what, this is consistent with what everyone agreed going through the 910 process, that LDP time is the appropriate time to vest.
I guess, Bob, my problem gets taken care of. I didn't realize this really exempts him from the vested building permit time.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Do we, then I would suggest you get in writing from him a letter agreeing to sign this at that time. I mean, if he is bound to sign the agreement, then any question I have certainly is removed.
George, wouldn't he?
You're not on.
Sorry, I'm not normally on, anyway. We, wouldn't he, isn't he bound to sign this agreement if he's going to move forward at all?
That's correct.
And that was the whole purpose of the conversations within 910, so I mean, I think it's redundant. He's not going anywhere. Land development, if he starts at the LDR, I mean, at the land permit level, development permit level, he can't go very far without it. I mean, you're not talking about any major amount of time. If he doesn't do it, he doesn't go forward, and eventually this expires and it comes back.
I don't know if there's an issue, George. If he's agreed to sign it and agrees in writing to sign it, then it ends the discussion. Otherwise, he's got an option, George.
George, you and I just disagree then.
Fine, we can disagree. We've done that before.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure.
What if during his approval process with planning and zoning or the Board of County Commissioners, another condition is placed on the applicant, and it has to be part of the developer agreement?
No, this doesn't, this doesn't go to the board. The preliminary plat?
This stops.
Yeah, this is, the preliminary plat is final here.
Here. It doesn't go anywhere.
But if he came to us with the developers agreement already signed, could there be changes made here that would impact the developers agreement?
Sure. I mean, you're in a quasi-judicial mode here, and if, for some reason, a project doesn't meet our criteria, then it doesn't matter whether they've done a developers agreement.
So if he signs a developers agreement, we do something that changes, is we're going to go through a developers agreement again?
Yeah.
We can move off this one. My only suggestion is that you get in writing what you said you have, apparently orally. On the traffic reports, sort of the third meeting in a row, I'm raising an issue of when this data is, and there's, as of what date is this data? And I'm talking about the counts and the vested.
Chris Moore, Assistant Public Works Director. We have included in the planning and zoning packet the link sheets for this project. It's Attachment 5, and if you look at the fourth page of Attachment 5, it has the date of compilation of those link sheets just underneath the title on the top.
Where's that? I'm sorry, Chris.
On the, in Attachment 5, the fifth page. It's actually the third sheet, but page 5.
At the top where it says date of compilation?
Yes, exactly. That's the date, that's the date that these link sheets were.
Were put together, I understand, but that doesn't tell me the dates of the counts or the dates of the vesting. I'm ex, well, it doesn't, I'm guessing at the moment that that means there are 2005 counts.
That's, that's correct. Since these were compiled in July of '06, we wouldn't have entered the 2006 counts.
Just to avoid any, can we just specify as of when the counts are? They're not as, there are 2005 counts. How about the vested?
Well, the vested column in here would be the vested from, also from 2005.
I had always been told the vesting was as of a very current date to the, being brought before us.
Actually, the vested amount should be that day that it was compiled.
Well, yes, as new projects are vested, then that, you're correct. As new projects are vested, day to day, they would be entered into that column, so as of the date that these link sheets were compiled, July of '06, those would, that vesting column would be as of that date.
So the vestings are as of a date around July 26, and the counts are as of 2005?
That's correct.
Can we just have that spelled out? Now, this changes what I've always understood, which is that the vesting was of a current date. I don't know how we can determine concurrency as of today when we're supposed to. I can see using old counts, but vesting numbers have to be current.
Yeah, and.
Now, it's not relevant for this application, but.
Right, and let me just tell you, you're correct. If we were giving, if we were reserving capacity and giving a concurrency certificate, we would have them apply their assignment to the actual available capacity today. So we would be looking at vesting today.
Is there some way to get in this paper a statement as to when these two numbers, as to the dates of those two numbers, the count number and the vesting number?
Yes, we can do that. What we can do is, we've got the date in all of the link sheets that are coming before you, the date of compilation. What we can also do is put the date that the counts that compile that list were taken from. In this case, it would have been the 2005 counts.
All, I'm not really looking for the compilation data, I'm looking for the date of the counts, which would generally be the, a year. And on the vesting, the date of the vesting number. The vesting would be a specific date, and the count would be a year, I think.
Well, the vesting date would be the same as the date of compilation.
I'll forget that, and when I look at it, it would be nice if you just simply said, "The vesting numbers are as of this date."
We can do that. We would have to word it differently, but yeah, we can do that.
Do we have any other discussion on item A?
I have a question, Mr. Keating, if I may. I just wanted to clarify something that you said. Now that the pending ordinance is going to be the ordinance, and a person cannot vest until they pull their building permit. If I interpret what you said, that means that when they go to pull their building permit, you add their trips and the current vesting as of that date, or like the day before, before the building permit is pulled? Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, let me first of all clarify. If a project is doing a prop share agreement, or they're doing a developers agreement and providing additional capacity with a major roadway improvement to a road that the county deems it should, those are two exceptions to the pending ordinance vested building permit time. So the Oslo subdivision could vest before building permit time. Okay? Now, that, to clarify that. Now, to get to the substance of your question, yeah, when we have any project come in for vesting, if it's a building permit for multi-family building, a single-family building permit, what staff does is, Chris's staff approves the traffic study, and then the trips get assigned to links. And my staff, before they issue the concurrency certificate, make sure that there's available capacity on each impacted link. So yes, as of that day, right then. Now, now let me just complicate it further. We issue various types of concurrency certificates. Every project you see here gets a concurrency certificate issued. These subdivisions get conditional concurrency certificates. Now, I don't, I'd have to ask staff, we might have given the conditional concurrency certificate for this project back in July. The conditional concurrency certificate says concurrency is available today, at this point in time. There's no guarantee it will be later. And if we're looking at a project that's in the review stage, we would give a conditional concurrency certificate sometime before the meeting. So it would be before that date.
Bob, some of that just occurred to me. If somebody on the 910 amendment, if there are 15 trips available on a link, and he needs 20, and he'll do a proportionate share, does he do it for the full 20 or for the five?
He does it for the five.
Then you're, then you're bypassing what was done at the commissioner meeting. The commissioner wanted the 15 meet, trips reserved. And you're allowing one developer to take them off the table.
No, actually, the way we explained it to the board, actually Stan explained it to the board, and the way we structured the rationing was that rationing does not apply if there is a prop shareable link. Because each single-family building permit applicant can do a prop share.
They didn't, they didn't adopt rationing. They adopted a rule that says you cannot vest until you build a building permit to reserve the spaces.
Right, right, right.
And now you're saying on prop share, one builder can pull them all.
Yeah.
I don't think that, I don't think the commission had any idea they were doing that.
I think we explained it to him, but one builder could pull it all if he's pulling a commercial building permit or a multi-family building permit. You know, single-family building permits usually result in fractions of a trip on a roadway.
That's up to them, they can. Do we have any other points on item A?
I was going to ask if I could about the land clearing. Is that done, the whole thing cleared? Is that generally the way you approve things?
Generally speaking, that's correct. On this particular site, there are two native buffer areas on the site that will not be cleared. What, what tends to get cleared are the areas where the right-of-way improvements will be for the subdivision, and also generally where where building pads will be. There are opportunities outside of those areas to retain trees, but on this site, you know, obviously we have the stormwater area where you have right-of-way, and where you have kind of the building envelopes on the lots. Those areas would be cleared and brought up to grade as part of the development of the subdivision infrastructure, generally speaking.
So these, where the area where the slab is going to go is generally got to be cleared? I mean, the slab is set on all of these plans?
The slab is not set, but there's, there's rough grades for the, for building. You actually have to get positive drainage, you know, during the, during the construction process. So those those improvements are done upfront as part of the subdivision development.
Is there possibilities they can leave certain trees for the owner of the property to make a decision whether to remove them or not?
Sure, you, I think you probably have a little more leeway in some projects than you do others, but there are some areas, some perimeter areas on the lots, I mean, there could be trees that are in those areas, and they might be preserved. But so much of it really depends on how much fill has to go in. And actually, the project engineer maybe could speak to how much fill on this particular site might have to go in. If you have to fill a site two, three, or four feet, you have very few opportunities left. That's one of the kind of disadvantages of a conventional subdivision, where you have your development spread out. I had to get the plug in. Where you had to spread out all the development, you spread out all of the clearing. And it's not the same necessarily with a PD. But on these common areas, that's really the safe spot, and and that's why we try to locate them where you have the best trees.
I was thinking in the tree ordinance, there was a provision for sub, that we had about leaving certain sized trees, and or did that not?
No, the tree protection.
But we didn't do it on individual lots.
That's correct, but the tree protection ordinance does, does apply, and they do have to do mitigation on these for for specimen trees.
They have to mitigate them, they don't.
Correct.
We have a say-so, okay, there's mitigation, but not necessarily. They don't have to leave them, they can mitigate.
Right, and they certainly have a much more incentive under that ordinance to to locate these preserve areas where the most specimen trees are and to try to save them. So that the tree protection ordinance does direct them that way.
But it looks like it's not protecting that many. I mean, I see where the area is here, and it's 15%. But there, it appears that the rest of the area is going to be cleared. And it would seem like, and the other question I had too was on is there any time period when they do the clearing and when they have to move ahead with the rest of the process? I mean, you see so many places where the land is cleared and nothing's being done for quite a long period of time. And is there any way you can tie this clearing to an actual building process? I am concerned now because you see a lot of vacant land sitting around not doing anything, and we're continually to clear. It seems to me that it's not really good for the environment.
Stan, if I may. Joe DeBiddle, Shulki Biddle and Stoddard, I'm the engineer for this project. And certainly we understand you're looking to a micro-site for each lot. Unfortunately, for the majority of places like this, there will be two to three feet of fill on the site. Also, when we're doing the engineering plans, and we're under construction, the engineering department now requires, they used to allow you to just build the road, you sell your lots, someone could bring in fill if they wanted to or not. With this now, with the new engineering requirements, we have to fill our lot up to at least so there's positive discharge to our roadway to get into the drainage facility. So basically, we cannot do micro-sighting anymore. And once we build the road for public access and for the lots, we have to bring the fill up to site.
But can you move these trees in a progression from one end of the division, subdivision to another? In a progression, as you put the fill in? Because it's a lot less expensive, probably even half the cost, to move a tree than to bring in new trees. To make a substantial site.
The native areas we have, we're conserving those trees, and those are full right now. That's why we're saving those areas. We can't compound those areas, shove more trees in there because they just don't grow. They will, you know.
I'm talking about where the new houses are, the lots.
Mr. Baker, are you suggesting kind of a temporary nursery area, so to speak, and then go back into the cleared areas later? If some, I just interject, some developers with probably larger sites than this have taken advantage of that concept and done that, and had enough room to kind of have a temporary nursery and put them back in, and that's certainly a smart way to do it if you have the room to do it. There's, there's not a requirement to do it, but it would be advantageous under our tree protection ordinance, it would be cheaper mitigation. You're correct, to do it that way. I don't know if there's an opportunity to do that on this site, though. The engineer could speak to that. I just wanted to clarify, kind of a temporary nursery concept is what you're.
I understand what you're, this is a developer, with the trees, we, I mean, if there's a nice tree out there, we'll try to save it. We're not just going out there and cutting, free cutting the whole place, but nobody does that anymore, or tries to avoid it, so.
It does take a fairly large project to do this. I mean, Windsor did it, and that was a fairly large project.
The downside or the part that is, frustrates people is that it is voluntary. I mean, we don't, we only have a certain number of rules in place that do that, some of which actually aggravate the situation.
The rules, you mean?
Yeah, well, yeah. The engineering rule is probably, takes away micromanaging. The, on the other hand, we don't have, other than the tree rule, I mean, there's really no authority that we have just to require anything like this. So it's really basically voluntary. We encourage it. Nobody, you know, that's what he's.
We could, we could require it.
We went through this with the tree, with the tree ordinance, believe me. We started in, because we've been down this path. I'm not knocking, and I think that everybody in this town would love to see this in some way or fashion, but I don't believe we ever found a solution other than encouragement that worked, or that we could put in pay black and white. You can always try. But I mean, it's, you know, I think that it's admirable.
So we probably need to think about redoing our tree ordinance then to. I know Fran Adams, when she was on the county commission, was proposing a tree bank. But I think that's, might be a little bit more difficult, but if we can do something on-site, even if it's a small site.
Well, most of these trees around this site are older trees. I mean, to, it's not that easy just to pick up an old tree, replant it somewhere else, and it's going to grow. I mean, they do have a high mortality rate. I mean, if these are young, you know, four inch, six inch, that's not really a problem.
Well, they're, you know, even in the last six months, the techniques you see around up in 58th Avenue off of 26th there, that they moved some pretty big trees there, and that was before the hurricanes.
Oh, no, and again, if we have larger oaks, and I think this is all just pines and palmetto, I don't think this is a oak hammock. That's, you know, that's something we try to.
Pine trees, I agree, would be difficult. But the oaks and others.
And most of the projects we do try to save, you know, nice oaks and replant them in an island or something like that, or put them on the outskirts, but.
Let me just make one more clarifying point, too. Actually, all cleared sites aren't bad. Sometimes it is better for the environment. You're probably going to see an article on Bristol Bay this week, this weekend. And Bristol Bay, before it was cleared, was a burnt-out grove. And the citrus trees were dead, and I can tell you, the Citrus League, and Mr. Hamner knows this, contacted us about a year ago and said, we need to, the county needs to be proactive to get those old groves that aren't being maintained clear, because they just festered disease.
I'm not complaining.
His point is the same one. Look, this is nothing, we've heard this quite a bit. Is that everyone wants to save every tree we can. The problem was mandating, we had trouble mandating it. What you try and do, I guess, is encourage it, not, the movement of trees, et cetera, is not as hard as as it used to be by any means. And I think in the tree ordinance, they talked about size of trees, and we tried to even go down to to lots. And I, if you, any ideas you have is fine with me, it's just.
Well, I'd like to see us maybe take another look at it. I realize you've been down this before, but, you know.
What is, not to belabor the vote on this project, but on, in regard to to clearing and filling lots, again, I think the best. filling lots, again, I think the best approach to save trees is to have them in decent-sized common areas, not leave it up to individual lot owners because, you know, those trees are, they're not in groupings, they're not gonna last as long over time, especially pine trees. Goodbye pine trees where you have them on individual small lots, you have to have those in particular on larger areas, I think. And the other thing, the reason why engineering has the requirements they have is because if you have individual lots, say, filled or rough graded and then several of them not, you wind up for a period of years with sites that now become lower, two or three feet lower, they actually start trapping water and you have die-off of the trees that are left in the, you know, that are at the original grade, and you have drainage problems on top of that. So there, I just wanted to let you know as part of the discussion that there are reasons, and I think someone probably pretty good, that engineering drainage requirements are what they are. But again, that's the way the regulations are today and this site meets it.
I think this project has provided us a good discussion on this, but we need to go on and.
Recommendation we approve? The staff's recommendations.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, we have number, item B here, now packed 20th Avenue, request for preliminary plat approval for 24 lot conventional single-family subdivision to be known as now-packed 20th Avenue subdivision. Robert Kaplan, owner, Shulke Bittle and Stoddard LLC agent, located at 1355 20th Avenue north of 12th Street, zoning classification RS6, residential single-family, 56 units per acre, land use designation L2, low density, up to 6 units per acre, and the density on this project is 3.28 units per acre. Mr. Christopher.
This is another generic question, and I, the only way I can raise these items is in the context of a project, or only the easiest way, so let me do so. One, pardon? I know, no. Bob, the way concurrency is handled here, the applicant has applied for and obtained a conditional concurrency certificate, they have to meet concurrency at today and the fact that the certificate was issued six months ago is irrelevant.
Well, that hasn't been the way we've been doing it. We've been issuing a conditional certificate because, like I said, it's not as important. It's not, you're not giving the, the applicant is not getting the right to create any traffic demand at this stage.
I understand, but our LDR say you meet concurrency when you issue, when a development order is to be issued. If we approve this today, we'll be issuing the development order, and it seems to me today they have to meet concurrency.
Except there are additional tests for concurrency, and if those tests aren't met, they never get to create the demand.
Well, that may be, but it, these numbers, I'm back to the traffic count and the, and this sort of makes the point I was making last time, Chris, this, these were compiled on 3/24/2006, and based on how you explain what that means is these would be 2005 counts again. They're different than the last 2005 counts, and the vesting is obviously different because it's the date of compilation, I guess, but how can we have two different 2005 counts?
Well, I'd have to look through link by link, which.
Well, we're over to 1750E.
I think last year, Chris, wasn't it not till the middle of the year that we stopped putting counts in as you were doing them?
Well, no, we were putting counts in as we were doing them, just about all through 2006. And that may be why some look different from project to project.
Right.
Because we may be, we may, for a short period of time, you know, prior to 2006, we were putting them in once a year.
Well, I started this meeting by asking, as of what date were the counts and you, it would help if we knew what date the counts were on each.
Right, and we're gonna, we're gonna put that in future, we're gonna put that in future packages, so you'll have that. It's gonna be a little dicey when we talk about 2006 counts because, again, we were changing them throughout the year, but what we'll do is we'll look at.
I thought you put all the 2006 counts in only very recently.
No, 2006, throughout the year, we were putting them in as the counts came in. That was the planning and zoning commission's desire that we do that.
Okay, well, then that, then that makes what I'm asking for very hard to do.
A little difficult, because what we would have to do is look at which links are impacted and then go back and look at when we actually changed those counts during 2006. It would be a difficult thing to do.
Well, I'm not looking for something that's gonna really, I thought they were all done as one date and that, that's.
We're back to doing that now. We'll be entering all of 2007, the ones that we're getting now, we'll be putting them in at the same time at the end of the year.
Well, could you just say then some are 2005, some are 2006, or whatever the facts are, without doing it link by link?
Right, exactly.
And then what the vesting is.
That's correct.
I suppose it'd be a stretch just to take his numbers at its face value, right?
That would be a big stretch, yes.
I figured as much.
No, I really, I really think, Commissioner, that, are you suggesting we shouldn't be questioning these numbers or looking at them or?
I am.
Well, perhaps you are prepared to accept them at face value, but I have found it's always useful to question and you learn.
Thank you, George.
Do we have any other discussion on this project?
So this site has gopher tortoises on it? Is that right?
Yes, Stephen, do you have any comment on that?
Yes, there was evidence that gopher tortoises are on the site.
Has the applicant done a survey to?
Yes, he has.
Do we know how many?
No, we don't know the exact count.
So how was the survey done then? Did you saw a hole or a burrow or?
They do a, one small area on the site and then they estimate from that how many tortoises there are.
By, how does that go work?
Well, they would count how many tortoise holes or burrows they find in certain square footage and then project that over the entire square footage of the site.
And those sites are located on the plans here?
No, they're not. They're located in a report.
So the tree, the trees were, it looks like from the map here, they tried to do the 15 percent set aside where the most trees were present.
That's correct, where there are trees, but especially seemed appropriate to put it next to some other areas of Charles Park and near other areas where you've got some preserved trees as well to try to get a larger contiguous area across property lines.
So were the gopher tortoise burrows somewhere near the tree area? I mean, is there?
Yeah, I don't recall and I don't know if we have the, have the report here, but perhaps the applicant recalls the methodology.
Just one bit of discussion, Dr. Baker, don't they have to get an incidental take permit and isn't Fish and Wildlife Commission gonna come in and map those out?
They do.
Okay, I think that at that point, you'll have them all mapped out.
And that is a condition?
That the state comes in and does that?
Well, I think the applicant, as is the condition that's recommended, 1A, that they'll have to get that permit from the state and so they'll have to perform, but I think they followed the methodology already.
My name is Joseph Shulke, Shulke, Bittle and Stoddard, and Dr. Baker, I'd like to try to address some of your concerns somewhat. A detailed survey was not done for gopher tortoises, part of this planning zoning commission hearing. What typically happens is we have environmental consultant go through the site, they give us a letter report, which we submit to staff, which we have right here, and basically, they 'll identify in this letter report their findings as far as wetlands, native upland habitat, the occurrence of gopher tortoises, the occurrence of scrub jays, those type of things, but not necessarily do the detailed survey of finding every gopher tortoise. We just identify if there are or there are not. And once we identify and staff acknowledges, yes, there are gopher tortoises, they typically make a condition, like you see here tonight, that it will be required that we do do the detailed survey and go through the proper procedures to get a take permit, relocate permit or what have you, and that's how the process typically works.
Okay, good. So do we get to see that survey that you just had there?
Well, it's been submitted to staff, I don't know if it's in your staff report, I think you just, but it's right here. I'd be happy to have you take a look at it if you'd like.
We don't normally see that?
No.
No, we can, we can attach those when there are occurrence of threatened or endangered species, if you want to see those reports, we can include them with the.
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah. We normally didn't see traffic analysis reports either.
Well, just, if I may interject, we used to show a lot more traffic and then were told not to, so we will, we will give you all the information you asked for and when you ask to not get it, we won't give it to you, so we'll do what you say.
Okay, well, I think it would be useful to know exactly where the sites are, where the burrows are and threatened endangered species that we have in the county.
I'd like to, to just, Dr. Baker, I put a, this is the fourth page of the report that we typically submit to the county, and on here, they, here they identify the flux codes for the communities. They'll show if there were wetlands, they'll identify where the wetlands were, they'll show where the upland areas are, and then there's a report where it identifies the type of upland habitat. In this case, the western portion of the area is considered pine flatwoods and it describes that, describes the type of vegetation that's found. And it talks about there's some disturbed lands in the center of the site that do have some live oaks and cabbage palms and things like that. And then it describes on the eastern portion of the site, it's, it was basically, basically considered a residential use because there was a home and what have you. So in this case, it's a three-page report that discusses that. Now, there are projects when you have wetlands or you have scrub jays that the report will be, this is usually our initial report, but if we find significant data, we'll actually go to the next step, sometimes before preliminary plat approval. For instance, if there was scrub jays on the site or if there was wetlands on the site, we'll go to the next step, which would be to meet with the St. John's River Water Management District and actually have them confirm our flags out in the field for where the wetlands were. So it kind of depends on the site and how far we go along, but in all cases, a minimum, at least from our company, our firm, is that we provide this data to the county and Ken Horstaglio and the planning staff, they'll read this and they'll identify, oh, there's scrub jays, we want more information, and that'll be part of the TRC review that the staff has and they'll ask us for more information, more studies, if they deem it appropriate, and then we have to do that before we come here to, for consideration for approval from y'all.
How do you feel about having a threatened endangered species on the property you're dealing with there? I mean, is that an advantage for selling your homes?
I'm sorry, is it an advantage to having gopher tortoises on site? I've never been asked that question before and I'm not a marketing person, I'm just an engineer, I get the projects approved, but I would, I'll venture to guess that if there are some tortoises in the upland preserve areas, that people tend to like them. I've seen where people like to feed them and stuff like that.
I would think it would be quite advantageous to have them there.
It may not hurt. I know of two projects I've worked on where we actually, Turtle Creek and Turtle Grove are the name of two projects we've worked on, so, you know, you have that theme and they intend on having some of the turtles in the open areas on their.
And you're aware that they're probably doing away with the take permits?
Yes, that's what I understand, and there are, there are actually areas where you can relocate tortoises even now that are diseased. I've got a project in the city, Sebastian, we just got approved and we're relocating, the turtles were tested to be, to have upper respiratory disease, but we're still relocating them to a place in Stewart. So they're getting moved out of county, but they won't be killed.
I think they can be, remain within the county now pretty soon. I think that'll be the new ruling.
Any other discussion on this project?
Bob or Stan, what are the level of environmental reports that are required? What, is it a one or two that's required of this type of development?
It's not standard, a lot of it's gonna depend on the environmental planning staff, you know, looking at the site, doing initial site visit and determining if there's, if there's a need for further studies. Some things are automatic, we have some areas where archaeological studies have to be done, some areas are pretty obvious, but a lot of it is gonna be checked by an environmental planner with a site visit first to see what level is needed or what area of the site, it may not be all the site. A lot of the sites that we've seen the last several years have been former growth sites and haven't required a lot, but a site like this is gonna, is gonna require the type of study that they did.
So you just have that initial study and then you determine the level that may be, may be required?
Well, the applicant also has to determine what permitting requirements there are for a project, and that's gonna drive a lot of the preliminary information that we get as well.
Has the county staff been out to look at this site?
Yes, they have.
The environmental?
I can tell you, Ken has been out there, Ken Horstaglio.
And let me just tell you, Mr. Smith, what we, when we buy property, it's different than when we review property. We do environmental audits, like a phase one environmental audit when we're buying a property, and if that indicates there may be some kind of pollution, we go to an environmental audit phase two. But the environmental work that we do here is mostly reviewing what a, an environmental consultant will submit, but staff does go and do site visits.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions on this project? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I second the motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Carries. Thank you. Item C.
I have no question on that. If you pulled it because of me, I have no further, my questions have been answered.
Does anybody else want item C pulled? Okay, I'm gonna read it into the record. Beale, Beale Fifth Street Southwest, request for preliminary plat approval for 36 lot conventional single-family subdivision to be known as Beale Fifth Street Southwest subdivision. Beale Holdings owner, MBV Engineering Inc. agent, located at 1225 Fifth Street Southwest, just west of 12th Avenue Southwest. Indian River Farms Water Control District, lateral E canal right-of-way, zoning classification RS6, residential single-family up to 6 units per acre, land use designation L2, low density up to 6 units per acre. Density on this project is 2.79 units per acre. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and we have seen this before. Margaret Knight, request to rezone plus or minus 51.7 acres, located approximately 2,700 feet south State Road 60 and 450 feet east of 98th Avenue. The zoning is going from A1 agricultural district up to one unit per five acres to RM6, multifamily residential district up to six units per acre. Margaret Knight, owner, Joshua Allen, agent, cale.
Thank you, Chairman Bruce. The site's located here in this graphic outlined in the white dash line, as you mentioned, it's east of 98th and about 2,700 feet south of State Road 60. It's 51 acres in size and the request is for RM6 multifamily residential. The purpose of this rezone request is to secure the zoning necessary to develop the site with uses allowed under the RM6, which is consistent with its M1 land use designation, which allows up to eight units per acre. As you mentioned, this site, this rezone request was brought to you in November of 2006, it was tabled till date certain today, waiting for board's decision on some State Road 60 road improvements and also for the board to review Land Development Regulations 910 for concurrency. There's still been no decision on the county's commitment to the State Road 60 project, that's to be decided in the future. However, on January 23rd, just a couple of days ago, the board did approve revisions to Land Development Regulations 910. to Land Development Regulations 910. As for the existing land uses, the site's currently used for agricultural purposes, and it has agricultural structures on site. To the north is still a grove area, and to the west is the Hibiscus Airport owned by ELO Citrus Incorporated. To the east is the site of the Portofino North, and a little bit to the south is Portofino South. Both of those are RM6 zoning districts. With all the rezoning requests, we have to look at the following criteria, the concurrency of the applications request, consistency with the current plans, environmental impacts, and compatibility with the surrounding uses. This meets all the concurrency tests, and the owners agree to enter into a proportional fair share agreement at the time of site plan approval. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan, in particular, these objectives and policies are listed here, and it's consistent with its land use designation, which does allow up to eight units per acre, and the request is for six units. Therefore, it's requesting, or consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's an altered site because as I mentioned, it's used for agricultural purposes right now. Part of it's former grove, and therefore, it's no adverse impacts are anticipated with this request. As for compatibility, as I mentioned, to the east, you already have the approved site plan for Portofino North. Portofino South is currently being reviewed. And to the west, we have the ag-zoned areas. In fact, I'd like to mention that the land use designation just north of this property is actually CI. So, this whole area to the north is a commercial industrial land use designation, but it's currently zoned ag. And that's the area where the airport is at. And as you're aware, we typically consider those ag areas inside the urban service area a holding area, more or less. And in fact, I'm not sure if the attorney for this project, Mr. Barquette, had handed out a letter from the airport to the west, but there's that, I don't know if, Bruce, maybe Bruce will address that later after the presentation, but they've actually submitted a letter affidavit saying that they probably will not continue to use that airport, that at some point it probably will be converted to other uses, residential or commercial. In conclusion, this request is compatible with surrounding uses, it's consistent with our comprehensive plan, it meets the concurrency test, and there's no additional environmental impacts. Therefore, staff supports the request and recommends, planning and zoning also recommend to the board to approve the request to rezone the subject property from A1 to RM6. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, Gail, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Does it really mean anything, the prop share agreement at this point?
Excuse me?
Does the prop share, the agreement mean anything at this point?
They agreed to enter into one once the site plan has been approved, but right now we're just in the rezoning phase, so there's no site plan.
Right, but if the capacity comes along at a later date, that's kind of like a moot point.
Yeah, I think the importance of the prop share is not so much that the applicant agrees to enter into it, but that it is available to be entered into. And we really don't want applicants entering into prop share agreements at this point because what we do is we're real conservative in estimating the number of trips that comes out of here. And, you know, they won't, they may not get the total yield that they could in this zoning district. That's one of the problems with, at a rezoning, dealing with concurrency. We're being ultra-conservative. So, if they did a prop share, they'd probably end up paying for more than they would be able to use.
George, I believe you have a question?
I have a more general question, but to stay on this one for a second. Assuming the Board of Commissioners approves the interest proposal on Route 60, would an applicant that could only take advantage of the Route 60 expansion if they enter into a proportionate share agreement?
Actually, that's a good point. The way, there are a couple of things. If, if as we anticipate, we will resolve the interest issue with State Road 60 and we'll go ahead and enter into an agreement with DOT to advance the two DOT projects, then the way we're structuring it is a special fee that will apply to any development that contributes trips to those links. Those developments will not have to enter into a proportionate share agreement, they'll just be charged this fee. What we have reflected here in the staff report is, even if the State Road 60 interest proposal falls through, there is still an opportunity for the applicant to do a prop share on the one State Road 60 link that's broken because that is in DOT's five-year work program.
This prop share is for the cost of the road, not just for the interest?
Yes. If, if it has to be done, yes.
I have my more general question. I just don't see how we talk about prop share here, but just to clarify it, am I correct? We're talking about Route 60, State Road, between 82nd Avenue and 66th Avenue. The last time this was up, you said it was on the five-year plan. I've come to understand, am I correct, that it's on the fourth or fifth year of the five-year plan?
As you know, five-year plans are always updated. One year gets used up, and then a new year is put in. In the current adopted DOT five-year work program, it's in either the fourth or fifth year. Now, in the draft tentative five-year work program that's been endorsed by the MPO, it'll be presented to the legislature in a few weeks, it'll be signed by the governor on July 1st. In that draft tentative work program, both projects are within the first, worth, first three years.
But that's on, that's on the maybe, on the, as we said today, it's in the fourth and fifth year.
Right.
And while you say that five-years are rolling years, as I understand it, in our county, if you're on the five-year plan, there's a fixed commitment to fund and do the road. It's been explained to me that on the state plan, if you're not in the first three years, you're nowhere, and that this segment, in fact, has been in the fourth, fifth year now for a good number of years. So, unless this, and in fact, I think, Bob, if, when we do look to the state roads, five-year plan in our LDRs and in our comprehensive plan, we distinguish between whether it's in the first three years or in the fourth and fifth year. The concurrency LDRs only recognize state roads in the first three years. The comprehensive plan only recognizes roads in the first three years. I don't know how we have this before us tonight, this tonight. This is a road that's in the fourth and fifth year. It's not eligible for prop share. In fact, if you look at our prop share law, it only applies to roads in our first five years, in our county plan. Now, if it's in the state first three years, I can see where the commission might say, hey, this road's going to be built, let's not hold back. But it's not in our LDR, it's not in 360 that we have to recognize state roads that are in the state road five-year plan. And while, if it were in the, again, if it was in the first three-year plan, I'd have no argument. But it's in the fourth and fifth, so I don't see how this can be said to meet concurrency as we sit here today. And as a point of order, I, this has to meet concurrency as we sit today. As we sit today, it's not eligible for proportionate sharing as I understand it. So, Mr. Collins, can you explain what's going on?
I can try. There's, our concurrency ordinance has several different sections. One of them is dealing with the components of concurrency for transportation, and it says that if a facility expansion is proposed for purposes of this transportation concurrency, the county may recognize and include transportation projects included in the first three years of the adopted five-year DOT work program.
That's the section I was referring to.
Also, the state concurrency law in talking about traffic says the facilities needed to serve shall be in place or under construction within three years after we approve a building permit or something that results in traffic generation. But that section is prefaced by, except as otherwise provided in this section. This is the concurrency section. And otherwise provided in this section is the prop share provision, which, which says that if it's in the five-year plan, you're eligible for prop share. And our, the prop share section of our concurrency chapter also says that the program shall apply to any development project in the county where it's determined that there's insufficient capacity on one more link. It doesn't say unless it's a state road. So, I think, I think prop share works an exception to the general three-year requirement, that it be in a three-year plan, because prop share speaks to anything being on a five-year plan.
Mr. Collins, in prop share, there's no three-year rule. The three-year rule you were talking about was in determining capacity, but if you look at prop share, nine twelve, nine ten point twelve, four general requirements, it says that an applicant whose project meets the criteria may choose to satisfy concurrency by prop share pursuant to the following requirements. And the second requirement is, the five-year schedule of capital improvements in the county capital improvement element includes, one or more transportation improvement upon completion will satisfy the capacity deficiency. There's no mention of state. The only time this county recognizes state roads in concurrency is when they're in the first three years. Because apparently, I'm told, if it's in the fourth or fifth year, that's maybe yes, maybe no, depends how the state feels. The only reason that Mr. Barrett is stepping forward and agreeing to put the money forward and advance the capital is, I assume, because he believes the state will not move the road into the first three years. If he, and in fact, the state has said to us, they won't pay us back for seven or 10 years, which very much says they're not moving it in unless we're paying for it.
Well, if we enter into what they call a JPA, a joint partnership agreement, they will guarantee it. And that's, we've done a resolution saying we're going to do that. However, when we brought to the Board of County Commissioners' attention that we would, you know, this was a lot of money, 67 million for both links, that there'd be a loss of interest. They've asked us to come back with a method for those people to pay the loss of interest. But we are moving forward right now as if we are going to do it. I think also you keep in mind, this is a rezoning, and it's conditional concurrency, doesn't guarantee it when they get there. It's just a test.
But let me make, my argument is, would not, I wouldn't be making any of these arguments if the interest deal that the county commission has indicated they will approve was in place. It's been delayed now over six months. There's problems someplace with it. Well, it's taken, it's been six months in the making. It seems it's premature before us.
Let me make a couple of clarifications. First of all, the DOT project that we're not being paid back for 10 years on is not deficient. They don't need a prop share. There's capacity on that one. There are two links here. One is 66 to 82nd, the other is 82nd and 95. If you look in your backup, if you look at the traffic study, if you look at the link sheets, there is capacity on the link from 82nd and 95. We're just talking about 66 to 82nd, and we specifically are not hanging our hat on the county advancing the project on some kind of interest rate program be putting in place. What we're saying is that DOT road project, 66 to 82nd, is in DOT's five-year work program, and the applicant can do a prop share. And if you look at nine twelve, nine ten, twelve, four, but go down to C, you will see that, that it says, "Any improvement project proposed to meet a developer's fair share obligation must meet design standards of the county for locally maintained roadways and those of the Florida Department of Transportation for the state highway system." This specifically envisions that prop share is also used on state highway roads such as State Road 60.
Bobby should have been a lawyer. Unfortunately, that isn't what the provision up above says. I don't know what the rush is here, but you're saying, Mr. Collins, that legally, even though it cannot meet concurrency, that we should, we legally should, can proceed with this?
I'm saying that both under Chapter 163 concurrency and our concurrency chapter, prop share seems to be calling out an exception to that three-year rule if it's on some five-year plan.
I'm not talking about a three-year rule, Mr. Collins. I'm talking about, I don't know what three-year rule you're talking about. I'm not talking about any three-year rule other than to suggest that if it's within the state three-year rule, then maybe we should acknowledge that that road should be included in our concurrency tests. But beyond that, this is a road where unless we do the deal with the state, it's not going to be improved. Concurrent's not met, prop share's not available. It seems to me this is a rezoning. I'm not clear what the hurry is. Let the county commission do its, make its decisions, enter into an agreement with the state, and then this application can come forward.
I think what you have to keep in mind...
Will, excuse me, just a second. Will, if, within, within the context of what you're talking about, within a rezoning, can we have, can we put forth, should this, we go forward and whether it's, if it happened to be approved, can we put conditions on the rezoning that, for instance, that based on what Bob said, that this is in the process and will come back in July in the three-year plan, that we can't say it must be in the state's three-year plan?
No, you can't do conditional rezoning.
Okay. I think you're giving another bite at this when you do site plan. This is conditional just to get the zoning. It has to come back again when you do site plan, and then you get to turn it down if there's no capacity. I think this is just, at this point, this is the first, we look at it as a test. It's only a test because things change over time. It's just a rezoning. When it comes back at site plan, you look at this again, and then there may not be capacity, may not be able to move forward. And I think keep that in mind, that's all I'm saying.
I raised a similar issue with Mr. Barquette this morning, that by approving the rezoning, we may be leading him down the primrose path, and if the interest recapture ordinance doesn't go forward, they may be stuck dead, and this is misleading. And what he told me is, they're willing to take the risk and...
But I mean, isn't that almost a conditional rezoning?
May I, may I just say something?
No. It'll carry the, whatever zoning is granted here without any condition. Whether that, it can be built to the approved zoning is another question that will be determined based on its ability to meet concurrency at the development stage.
Just, let's let Mr. Barquette speak.
Bob wanted to say something first.
Yeah, let me just, even though we can't condition rezonings, when the board approved nine ten on Tuesday, they approved a provision that we can condition conditional concurrency certificates. So, that's specifically endorsed by the Board of County Commissioners. So, what they in essence said is, yeah, at the conditional concurrency stage where you're not reserving capacity, you're not approving development that can actually put traffic demand on the system, you can recognize that there's a prop share availability and therefore approve the conditional concurrency with that condition.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Bruce Barquette. I practice at 756 Peachland Boulevard. I represent the applicant for this rezoning. I want to thank Gail for his presentation and staff, and Bob for his legal reasoning, which is impeccable. What I told Will was actually just the opposite. If concurrency were available today, you'd be leading us down a primrose path because we can't lock it in. At a rezoning stage, you can't reserve concurrency. So, it doesn't matter the status of capacity or concurrency at the date of a rezoning because you can't lock it in. This project is two years away, even if they were going as fast as they could, and you, even if we... And you, even if we had concurrency and capacity today and the road was guaranteed by DOT, not one thing you could say or do would tell us we would have capacity two years from now when we're ready to pull a site plan. So to say that you're misleading us by approving a rezoning today is, with all due respect, nonsense. You're not misleading anybody. We recognize it. I mean, you've had this whole long hearing. I've been sitting here bored as ears listening to them. We recognize their, State Road 60 may not be approved. However, we think it will be. And more importantly, you have a comprehensive plan, and the purpose of your comprehensive plan is to try to implement it. I mean, believe it or not, it has goals and objectives and policies, and you're trying to get there. And what the comprehensive plan pictures for this piece of property is M1. It ain't ag. It's M1. And M1, you'll want up to eight units per acre there. Now, around this property, the zoning is six units per acre, so my client has only asked for six, to be consistent with his neighbors. At the last hearing, an issue came up about the airstrip. So my client talked to Mr. Orth. We got an affidavit, which I presented. Mr. Orth said, "We're the airstrip. We don't mind this rezoning. In fact, we support it. And in fact, we're probably going to be headed that way someday ourselves, because the use of the airstrip is in decline." So we've done that. You asked about 98th Avenue at the last hearing. We submitted a revised traffic study. I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at it.
Yes, I did.
Okay. And do I need to go into it? Are we satisfied? There are a lot of trips left. So everything that we could do, we've done. Your issue, Mr. Christopher, is certainly out of our hands, but we are willing to take the risk. We're also willing to go before the county commission with whatever you decide tonight, because we think by the time we get there, and in fact, we have a little bit of control about when it gets there, State Road 60 will be resolved. So we ask you to help us implement the comprehensive plan the way your laws and regulations and ordinances direct. And that's all we're asking. It's only a rezoning tonight, and it's a rezoning that's consistent with your comprehensive plan. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. I think I'll go ahead and open.
My question is, can proportionate share be satisfied by a developer making public transportation more frequent or closing, or making the grid links that don't exist but almost exist, filling those in, so we take traffic off of State Road 60? To me, that'd be way preferable than just widening State Road 60.
And those are two good questions, and those are questions that have come up statewide. And I'll answer the second one first. Yes, if there is an alternative facility that would divert trips away from a deficient link, that improvement project could go ahead and through a prop share agreement and concurrency would be satisfied. Public transportation is a little more problematic. People just don't ride it.
Or frequent, they would.
But if it were more frequent, but would need to have more density here, really, because you just can't.
Would that be a way to pay for it, though?
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, it just doesn't work when you're all spread out and you're got low densities. You can't get the headways. You know, generally, real viable public transportation, you usually need an area of a couple hundred thousand people that's more compact, and you need densities more in the, like, six to 10 range to do it. But public transportation around here is not a congestion mitigator, so it really wouldn't be used.
Bob, based on something Mr. Barquette said, if there was a piece of adjoining property out there, five acres, that was RM6, could they request rezoning to ag?
No. We have policies in our plan that allow agriculture to remain where it's zoned agriculture, and it, in essence, designates agriculture within the urban service area as a holding zone. But we have policies that specifically prohibit changing land within the urban service area to agriculture.
So this is expected to be an RM something in that area?
Yes. Yes.
That's a good question.
Sure.
I don't remember when Portofino and Verona Trace and Ironwood got approved. They're the multifamily projects out there. Have any of these projects vested? I'm seeing a few trips on the vested traffic, but what projects have vested?
Just Verona. But Portofino has not vested, and the Tabor property has invested, and whatever. Verona's the only one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other questions up here? Okay.
We're not reserving capacity at this point. We're just doing rezoning, right? Well, you know, I still have a trouble with 98, but I can't legally do anything about it since we're just not doing any capacity reservations here. But you still understand my point of 98's going to fail after the second person is vested. I mean, you don't have the capacity there to take another vesting period.
I'm not sure, when we've discussed this before, whether we did indicate that we are working on getting 98 paved down before.
Yeah, we did. The problem was, we had a discussion, and there's a trouble getting a right-of-way on the north end, northwest side, and that's my problem. Even if the intention is the best, there's a problem with the, it's going to have to be a condemnation if you even take, it's going to take him to get that property, to make that thing go. So it's going to be a real problem. There's just nothing I can do about this. This one legally, Mr. Barquette knows that, and he's chuckling over there, because we're not reserving capacity. But I just want to, again, wave the red flag that 98 is going to be a big problem, so please.
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to piggyback on that, Mr. Fletcher. The northwest side of 98 is industrial, and there's industrial buildings there, correct?
Right.
And that's why we can't get the right-of-way.
That's right.
Because there are already industrial structures there.
And they have no intention of giving it away.
So we have a road with a capacity of 860, and that's it. And we're doing a lot of multifamily rezoning out there.
Right. There are two other RM6s that are already out there that.
Actually, there's 1,193 units approved so far in just those three projects that I mentioned tonight. I don't know what else is out there.
And that's the same dance I did the last meeting, which you're all very familiar with, I'm sure, but I just had to do it again, so.
George, did you have another point?
Public hearing.
Yeah. Let me go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have anybody from the public that would wish to speak on this project? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Okay. Do I have a motion? Discussion?
I have a concern about the three-year and the 166 negative trips on that link on Route 60. I was under the impression that rezoning was, I guess I'm wrong, but Mr. Barquette said you don't have to have concurrency for rezoning.
That's not true. I don't think he said that, and that's not true.
I didn't say that. I said whether you had it or not, it didn't matter, because you can't say it. So whether you had it tonight or not, this project couldn't go forward for two years, so we couldn't reserve it. So it matters not one whit whether it's there tonight or not.
He's saying it's not legally vested, so therefore whether he has it or not doesn't matter.
And it will never, ever be vested in the future, based upon what the county commission did on Tuesday. You'll never be able to vest until you're ready to pull a building permit, so.
But isn't the argument usually, well, why did you rezone it if we can't build on it?
Never. I've never made such an argument. Never in my life have I made such an argument. It's 20 years. No, Mr. Christopher, I'm sorry, you've never heard me say that. Why did you rezon it?
I don't want to get into a discussion on that, and I'd love to some other time with you. I've got two problems with this project. One, there's a technical problem, which is it can't comply with the laws we set today. That's a technical problem. Generally, complying with the law is not considered a technicality. But it is true, the county commission can clean it all up if they do the interest agreement, and if the state enters into it, and if the state legislature goes with it or whatever. My second problem is the traffic issue. We've got serious traffic problems out there. We don't know the dimensions of them. Continued rezoning at maximum or near maximum, I think, is a mistake. There's no obligation to rezone simply because it's consistent. The rezoning is consistent with the comp plan. There are other zoning classifications that are consistent with the comp plan, including the classification that's there now. And on both grounds, I'll be voting against the motion to approve or making a motion to disapprove, if that's where it's headed.
Just because, and to speed things along, and I have probably been as big a property rights own advocate as anybody, and I sometimes get conflict with emotional and/or ideological arguments against it. I move that we approve the project as presented, because concurrency, as he said, does not matter at this time. I'll make the motion.
I don't understand why to rezone it if we can't get concurrency.
Then you don't have to approve. I mean, I believe that that's, as he said, it's kind of a non-issue, and I.
Are we in discussion now?
And I think it is, in the, within the context of our urban service area, the property has that right, and they've asked for that. And I think we have terrible traffic problems here, but I think in this case, it's way off out there. But I will support them. I'd move that we, as I said, I'd make that. And I understand.
Well, you understand, I disagree that they have the right, they have the privilege to, but the law is clear, they don't have the right, if there are concerns, legitimate concerns. And I, but, well, you got a motion.
Well, do we have a second for the motion?
Yes, we do. Mr. Chair. Any more discussion?
Is there any way this can be held off until we find out what's going to happen with the approvals on Route 60? I mean, that's why we originally postponed this, isn't it? Isn't that why we tabled it for the decision on Route 60? Was that the reason, Mr. Barquette?
What happened was, you, there was discussion about postponing it until there was a resolution on State Road 60, and I stood up and said, "You don't know when that's going to happen." So we would request that you specifically set it for a date certain, because I don't know when that's going to be resolved either, but I can help control when it gets to the county commission. But we would rather you take action one way or the other tonight, and we would appreciate if you would.
All right. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
I believe that motion fails.
What was the vote?
Five to two, I believe.
Against.
Greg and I voted in favor, and the rest of you all voted against.
Do we have another motion?
We don't need any more motions.
You have to express your opinion now.
We don't need, I mean, Mr. Barquette can appeal that decision.
Next item on the agenda is Commissioner Matters. Does anybody have anything? George?
Yes, Bob, I do. Go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm going to kind of ramble on in trying to learn here. And I want to refer, not by name, to one of the votes that we took at the last meeting in which, and Bob and Stan, or Will, if I get, nearly make a mistake, I want you to stop me at the time and correct me. But in that case, we had a developer who came before us for an approval, who had met all of the requirements requested by the county. And because there was a recognition of a problem, that was part of the approval process. And that recognition would then be handled by funding that would occur by the state requirement for a five-year plan and a county requirement of three. So in that case, the developer had met all of the requirements, and the commission voted it down. Now, this is a philosophical statement that I have, that I want to make associated with this until I ask the question. And that is that even though the laws, rules, and regulations are being followed, I have a concern when a developer comes into Indian River County, completes the development, and leaves, and all of us that live here are left to solve the problems associated with whatever the improvements are that are necessary. And it seems in the discussion tonight, there's sometimes a concern as to whether those improvements are really going to be made. And knowing a little bit about the budgeting process of governmental entities, I know that it's conditional on how much money you've got when you get to that second and third year or fourth and fifth year. So what we're doing, or what I've seen us do here in my short tenure, is people are following the rules and then being denied based on concerns that we have. And my question then is this: Do we carry our concerns, and we're carrying them to the county commission, do we carry them by voting the law, but with some aside connected to it as to what our expectations are for those improvements to be made in a manner that is really timely, so that those of us that are concerned about quality of life here in Indian River County and aren't going to leave, that those conditions are met for us? Or do we go to the commission, vote for, vote the law, and then go to the commission with the problem? I'm kind of failing to understand why we vote down things that meet the stipulations of our own rules because of legitimate concerns, and then allow the process to continue with appeal. So basically, I don't know whether that's a rhetorical question or.
Now, you join the group. We all have that.
I think it's, we're having a hard time expressing our concerns in black and white. That's where it's been for a long time.
I think there's also, you're making the assumption that the law was met, and that's where the argument was. One of the requirements of the law is that certain improvements be in place by certain time periods.
Not for rezoning, George.
For rezoning, concurrency must be met. The law says that. It may be a conditional concurrency, but the concurrency requirement at time of rezoning must be met. It is not the final concurrency. It has to be remet and remet.
It has to be recognized.
No, met. That's why the requirement of proportionate share was in this last application. He was said he would have to, Bob's our lawyer.
I am not a lawyer, but Mr. Christopher is correct.
For one link. There's one link that's caused this. Is that correct?
That's correct. And we put a condition in our conditional concurrency certificate, and with that condition, we feel that concurrency is met.
It's not a fault of the developer, it's not met, or the applicant. They're meeting all the rezoning requirements. They've done everything they can. But there are requirements in the law. Last time, it was on an intersection that had to be improved. The law required that. Majority here felt that the plans to make the improvement were too nebulous.
I don't understand that myself. The staff recommended it based on them having met or it being recognized, and then a plan is in place to make the corrections on College Avenue, or whatever that's called, and the expansion of the intersection. So I, what I, George, what I'm concerned about is that I would love to see concurrency work such that the improvements are there the day the first car drives into parking lot.
Well, the law says they must be there within three years. Well, but within three years, you have to have plans that the road will be there. I'd love to have it, too, the first year, but we at least have to meet the three-year standard.
Don't give up. I think you're right. So I encourage you. Any other Commissioner Matters?
Yes, I have one, actually two. On the OZO properties, I want to thank the owner and the engineer for the ultimate right-of-way. That did not go unrecognized.
Yes.
Not by me, anyway. And Chris, I emailed Chris a request for some information on, I'm not going to say the improvements at 58th and 60, in respect for what Ann wrote. I'm not going to say the improvements at 58th and 60th, in respect for what Ann brought up.
Thank you.
The widening of 58th and 60th, and this kind of dovetails with Mr. Smith's statement about the questions on what we did not approve last meeting. And, and one of the reasons was because the route, this 58th and 60th intersection needs to be widened, but it got so expensive that they were actually, they actually brought in someone to take a look at alternative routes. And, and I actually, I'd like, Chris, to tell us about the cost on the widening of 58th and 60th. I was very surprised with the figures he told me today.
Right. Well, it, it's a big project and it's very involved. We have a lot of, a lot of asphalt to add. We're going to be adding turn lanes in all, on all four approaches. We'd be adding additional through lanes on 58th Avenue, and in order to stretch that intersection out, where things are already very tight, you've got City of Vero Beach transmission poles running along the east side of 58th, you've got FPNL electrical transmission poles along the west side. We're going to be looking for stormwater drainage, so there's a lot to go into it. But our current estimate for just the construction is thirteen and a half million dollars.
And the purchase of right-of-way?
And when you add on right-of-way, obviously, we're not, we haven't really nailed down the right-of-way cost yet, but it could be upwards of twenty, twenty-five million dollars when you include right-of-way. This is one of the reasons why we started looking at diversion routes for that traffic. Now, when we say diversion routes, we've got a study underway to look at what would be the impact to that intersection if we pave 66th Avenue to the south, make connections over to 12th Street, if we run College Lane west from the Community College where it ends now, over to make a connection at 66th Avenue, if we perhaps extend College Lane east of 58th. Right now, there's a City of Vero Beach substation in the way there. That would have to be moved. But what we've done is we, we've, we've had several routes looked at, and we're going to try and, and get our consultant to tell us if those routes are built, or any combination of them, how much traffic would be diverted away from the intersection, and would we have to widen it as much? Now, there's, now, if these diversion routes come true, that doesn't mean we don't have to do any widening. There's still some basic widening we'd have to do, but we may not have to do as much. And that, that's what we're trying to get right now from our consultant.
And how much would it cost to me, that electrical station, I forget what you call it?
Though, there's electrical step-down transformer station right on the east side of 58th Avenue, even with College Lane, and to move that, we've got some preliminary estimates from the City of Vero Beach TND, talking about one or two million dollars, I believe. But it's, it's going to be expensive. It's going to be expensive no matter what we do, but we're trying to get the best bang for the buck on that job.
And see, that's one of the reasons.
If you can move that, if you can move that station for one or two million dollars, I would be very surprised. I think you need to go up to about.
I'm sorry, was it five million, Bob? I might be a little bit behind in my numbers there.
All right. So, we're at thirty million dollars now, and, and that kind of, I think that's why we took a second look at that, because we really do need to look at some alternative routes. There's just so much widening you can do, and pouring thirty million dollars into one intersection, it is just, it just continues the insanity. And we need to plan a little bit better before we approve another shopping center at this intersection. And that, I think that was the basis of our decision, even though, you're right, they comply with everything else.
Sure. George has one. Chris, somebody, would you comment on, somebody said to me that you think you've got a problem at 58th and 60th. It doesn't compare to the problem at 43rd and 60th. Is that a similar, very, very serious and costly intersection problem, or is that of lesser dimension?
It is from the aspect of right-of-way. Things that land at State Road 60 and 43rd Avenue is also very tight. If we start to move, widen the intersection, we have to buy additional property. We have to buy mobile station, the Lennies. There's a lot of things that are in the way of stretching that intersection out, too. From a capacity standpoint and congestion, I think State Road 60 and 58th Avenue is worse during the peak hour. Both intersections actually fail, but I think State Road 60 and 58th probably has more congestion and more backups than 43rd does.
So, you equally need a plan for 43rd and 60th Avenue?
We do. We need, we need widening at both intersections, but we're trying to get 60th and 58th Avenue done first because that one is, is more critical.
When you last did 58th and 60th, that was, what, six years ago?
Nineteen ninety-nine is when we finished it.
Ninety-nine, so, eight. Well, how, in your projections, how far did you think that, how long did you think that was going to last?
Well, we, we assumed that traffic projections going into the future would not be, we don't have, we didn't have a good, really good handle on the growth that was coming, say, between 2000 and 2006.
How did that happen?
Well, I think we thought that our grid perhaps would fill out quicker than it has.
The formula doesn't work.
It's a, it's a modeling system, right, that you're operating on here?
Right. We, we have a modeling system that, that looks at our entire grid, and, you know, we, yeah, we, we have to look at the entire grid.
That's the same one they were asking you on Tuesday about your modeling system?
Well, no, that.
Is that a different modeling system?
That was actually having to do with how capacity is calculated, but when we talk about trip modeling and, and distribution of traffic out into the network, that's a little bit different.
So, how much confidence do you have with your model now that, you know, in another eight years, after your, after the three or four years, five years, how, how are you going to be out there in fifteen years then?
Well, I don't know. Bob, you want to talk about the long range?
Yeah, let me, let me tell you.
It's more of a long-range transportation question.
Well, it, it's a question, for the last year, we have been arguing with some civic activists that our projections are way, way too low. Some people have been coming in and they looked at like the, a one-year trend where we're growing, you know, where, where we're doing like three thousand building permits a year. So, they're, they're saying all of our projections are way low. Well, you look at what's happening now. Are they still low? No. I mean, it's, right now, people realize that housing has really gone down. There's a national slump. It's worse in Florida. It's much worse in Florida because we have property tax problems. We have insurance problems. We've got investors that came in and took up a lot of the housing. That's creating additional supply. The demand's going down. Basically, when you look and travel demand forecasting modeling, predicting trips on roadways is predicting human behavior in a number of ways. It's predicting absorption rates for the housing market, and then it's trying to predict what those people will do, where they'll go, will they drive. So, I can tell you, the best person who can do good projections is the person who can get right what's going to happen in the housing markets in the next few years. So, I, I think there's a general perception based on what's happened in the last six months, that it's probably going to be five years before the housing markets return. So, I think what you're going to see is you're going to see a lot lower growth in traffic for the next five years, because there's a lot of absorption to be done. There, there are a lot of vacant houses that need to be absorbed.
So, did you see that coming?
No, that, that's, that's one of the, that's why I will always tell you, every projection that we bring to you will be wrong. It's just a question of how wrong and which direction.
So, we're not as conservative as we sometimes say we are, ultra-conservative, things like that?
Why, this is probably a question for the commission, but is there, is there part of the law or state that restricts the amount of money that, that development pays for the improvements? If there's this enormous cost associated with 58th and 66th, and it's because we're increasing trips and people, then why doesn't development pay more for the improvements than they do?
Or stated differently, when is the impact fee schedule going to be revisited?
It is being revisited. We have a consultant working right now. He's probably about a month into a six-month contract. So, we're looking at upping the impact fees. Just to give you an idea, right now, impact fees and water and sewer capacity charges, about fifteen thousand dollars for a twenty-five hundred square foot house. You look at some parts of the state, they're twenty-five and thirty thousand, like down in Collier County for a single-family house. And that's what, what it's getting to. The infrastructure costs are increasing exponentially.
We, we were at about three thousand until these civic activists that Bob was talking about raised the issue, and it went up to fifteen thousand two years ago.
No, I, I said about three thousand building permits a year for about the last two years. If you go back five years, we're, we were at seven hundred. What happened is we had a significant peak in the last two or three years, and you're going to see a significant trough coming up.
And I'd like to just mention that raising the impact fees may not be the solution that it could have been, because we won't collect any impact fees until building permit, when the concurrency ordinance was not adopted as proposed. We will no longer be collecting those fees early, at early stages of development, and land development permits, final plats. We'll have to wait till the building permits or the money to improve the roads are going to be delayed by several years.
And then we heard today that the property values are going to stay the same, or not go up very much. So, the income coming into the county is going to be not increasing either then, right? So, how are you going to get caught up?
You can't.
So, more and more growth is producing us in a, in a worse situation, right?
Well, let's look at a couple of things. First of all, we have a pretty healthy fund balance right now that's going to allow us to complete a lot of the projects we're doing. We don't just use traffic impact fees. The county dedicates twenty-eight percent of its local option sales tax to transportation capital improvements, so that's not dependent on growth. We also use some other sources of funding. We have DOT grants. We've gotten pretty good amount of money in trip funding this past year. So, there are several other sources, and if demand keeps going down, if the housing market stays in the dumps, if it keeps tanking, we won't have the demand, and maybe we'll have to reassess whether we need to do some projects or the timing of those projects.
I'm still going to buy a tank.
I have one matter. On Bristol Bay, you spoke of that earlier, what is going to happen there? I mean, that thing is, is pretty much folding its doors right now. How, how does the county keep that from being an eyesore?
Let me tell you, Stan might want to add to this, but large development corporations operate in different ways, and this Bristol Bay, which was being developed by WCI, is a good example of that. WCI doesn't own the dirt. They don't own the land. It's a corporation called IHP, I think out of Texas, that owns the land, and they've been in touch with staff, and contrary to what you might have read in the Press Journal, they are not abandoning the project. They're just not going ahead with vertical construction right now. They are going to continue putting in the infrastructure, including the perimeter buffers.
Okay.
And they, they're, right now, we have, we have even more stringent rules than we used to, to make sure that there are any adverse environmental effects. We had, you know, there's requirements for silt screens anytime you have development projects going on, and we look to make sure there's not going to be any erosion, whether by water or air. And then, Mr. Swanson has the commercial part of that project, and as I stated, he will be going ahead, and he actually depends on some of the infrastructure that IHP will be putting in there. So, it really shouldn't be an eyesore, and what you may see me quoted in the paper on this weekend is saying that Bristol Bay is probably better as a cleared site than it was as a degrading dead grove with the situation.
I fully agree with that, and I guess the reason I brought the whole thing up was, do we have any protections in place for, for somebody not being quite so good?
Yeah. What is everyone going to do?
Yeah, in the, the ever, the ongoing quest for government to make everything perfect and protected. Let me say this. We, we do not have any bonding requirement, would be one approach potentially, for every developer who comes in before he or she starts to guarantee, you know, some kind of maintenance bond or something that, you know, if they go bankrupt, somebody, I guess the county would be able to pull the money and go out and do it, make that a county job. So, we don't have anything like that. We do have, as, as Bob said, we have erosion control requirements that could, you know, if a site laid fallow long enough, it'd probably have to be seeded and grassed, and you just have a large, you know, kind of cleared area that's now grassed. To, to do bonding and so forth for that, just not even looking at the administrative nightmare of that, and, and the fact, you know, how many projects really do go under for a certain amount of time. Kind of the irony would be if you, if you put enough requirements, you kind of perhaps help lead to failure of the project, and ultimately, you know, then you really would have to use the money. Aside from a bonding requirement, there would, you know, I'm not aware of any other approaches there might be, you know, to make sure if some, if a, if a site was cleared and laid fallow, again, I think, I think something that's not very costly that, that can, and I've seen happen and work, is just to grass it, so that you have the erosion control under, underway, and it's green.
I mean, we have had quite a few projects go pretty much belly up on us. I mean, you know, we had Grand Harbor and then Orchid.
Right. We've had Sea Oaks. We've had just, I think every one of them, except the Vista projects over time, the big ones have all had their turn.
I mean, the only reason I brought the question up was to, to find out what, what the county has, you know, as a right when, when this happens.
And I think basically, it's still, you know, people have the right to fail and do, and it's going to, it's a question of erosion control and, and getting the site grassed. I mean, I just, I think that's bottom line, which you would probably see happen.
And the county would pay for that?
No, I think their, their erosion control, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cost much to have that done. We've had sites, and this was during the last downturn, in, in the early nineties off of State Road 60, they abandoned the site, but had it, had it seeded and it did grass in. It was very inexpensive to do, and it, and it grassed in.
The county could have. Got to come, wake back up, turn back on. The county could possibly do something. If you don't do bonds, they could do some form of a lien.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
But Stan, doesn't, doesn't the county have bonding and other protections in once lots start to be sold to the public?
You're, you're correct. For subdivisions that have been plotted, once they get to that stage, we, we do have bonding requirements.
So, you don't have the public at risk, where you don't have the bonding requirements?
That's correct. That's correct. That's correct.
I've got, this is a small, small, very small issue, but it wouldn't be if something happened. But are there, are there any responsibilities that the county carries out with development? In this issue, we're talking about somebody clears something, but on the northeast corner of 43rd Avenue and 25th Street Southwest, last road in Indian River County, that area was cleared, and then I guess, guess they gave up on that project, and now, the, the grass and weeds in there are four and a half, five feet tall, and we've got a nice wet, well, relatively wet winter right now. But, you know, we go into the, the February and March, and the winds start coming out of the northwest, you know, somebody throws a cigarette out of a car in an area, someplace like that. So, that, that should be, I think it should be mowed periodically to, you know, try to keep that from happening.
Right. I'm just kind of, I, maybe I lost the sense of direction. Did you say northwest or northeast?
Northeast.
Northeast. Okay. So, that would be, that would be Madeira. And, and Lennar has that project, and also Trips and Estates on the other side.
Right.
On the west, on the west side. Your concern is about fire hazards? In other words, if it, if it grows up?
It was a grove before. You don't want to be concerned about that.
Sure, yes. Right, right. It's a different issue. You're right. I don't think we have anything that, that particularly addresses that. Yeah, I can actually.
No code enforcement issue or anything?
Right. I think they are, I think they are actually moving ahead. Part of the problems that they've had is, is actually with some permitting for stormwater, so that, that might not be an issue in the future.
Thank you.
I guess that brings up another point. We did approve projects that, that WCI, based on WCI doing those improvements there. How, how is that going to fly?
I'm, I'm sorry, which projects?
We did approve. We did approve projects based on the improvements that WCI was going to do at 510 and US-1.
Yeah, I think they contributed money, and they have paid their...
It already contributed?
Yeah, I think their million and a half, besides paying all their impact fees for their resting.
Okay. Do we have any other commissioner?
I got three things. One, you. You can be excused if you like.
Thank you, Dad.
Bob, thank you for the information on the water supply planning. That clarifies it. It looks like it was a real rigorous process. That, one thing that confused me is, it seems to be a rigorous process to identify alternative sources of water. Is that means we've decided we are going to run out of water, and there's no need to study that question?
Actually, I think the rigorous process for looking at the alternatives is what the Utilities Department consultant is going to do, and we'll be going further in the actual public water supply plan requirements, part of the evaluation and appraisal report, to actually come up with some policy direction.
Are we doing anything, I've heard it said that we're going to run out of water, or there's a serious risk in six years. Are we doing anything to verify whether that's 100% certain, just a rumor being spread by some people?
And I think our Utilities Department is coordinating pretty closely with St. John's on that. As you saw, the consultant is not looking at, I guess, supply and demand. He's looking for alternative sources. But I think St. John's has most of the supply and demand information.
I'm talking more supply than demand.
Right.
They hadn't stopped permitting wells in the groves, so, I mean, I guess St. John's must not.
Well, can we, we're going to get something on that, Bob. It seems to me, a part of this study that's being done should be a very hard look at what the supply is.
Right.
Unless it's conceded that we're going to be out in six years. I don't know, Dr. Baker, do you have some, was that you, Doc?
No, the rumor wasn't me.
[laughing]
But we all had a workshop here, months ago, and the head of the St. John's Water Management District was here, and said 2013, we'd be showing some effects.
From what?
From deep wells.
We'll be bringing you all this information in the next couple of months.
Here's an important part, is to tie down just what are the probabilities on the supply.
Right.
I mean, can we think about alternative sources over the next 20 years, or do we only have two or three years to think about it?
No, we will have that information for you.
Okay. Do we have any other commissioner?
Nice try.
Good try. That was good, Bob.
Chris threw a slide up. I don't know if, with that, hopefully, Commissioner to my right will not take offense, but I'm going behind some numbers again.
I brought them.
2005, 2006 count numbers have as much rationale to them as if you had flipped a coin. Half go up, half come down. It just...
Somebody's cellphone is...
That's mine.
And I have...
Which link do we change?
My question is, do we believe these or not?
Well, I, the question I have is, how can half go up and half go down, and go up and down by such large swings?
Well, what we did is...
Based on a scientific approach.
What we did is, we looked at not just only the 2005 and 2006 yearly comparisons, but we just, we went back and did the last five comparisons, '01, '02, and then so on. And this shows, this table shows how many links went up and how many links went down when you look at the year-to-year comparisons. The last comparison on there, '05, '06, is the one that George is referring to, where about half went up and half went down. But as you go back in history, a lot more of the links increased than decreased. So, I think that this year, as I said at the last meeting, probably was a year when we switched over to the new equipment. We stopped double-counting a lot of links, and I think that was the reason why many of the counts went down this year. But historically, as you go back, we have about 60% of the links each year that rise, and about 40% that fall.
You know, if your range, Chris, was 5% on the upside and 5% on the downside, and the up and down was showing a swing of 10%, you'd say, all right, your numbers are in a certain range. But this year's numbers have a 40, 50% range.
But it's not far off from, it's not that far off from the year past.
No, this just shows the numbers that went up and the numbers that went down. It doesn't show by how much. You've got to look behind it, George. If you look behind it.
All right, go ahead.
Well, you're right, George, and if you look...
Not showing the percent, this is not showing the ones that went down by how much. This year, some went down by as much as 30%, 35%. And if you think there's been a 35% drop in traffic on any road in this county, the only road that's dropped that much is those roads that were closed while you repaired them.
Don't complain about that.
I, Chris, I would ask that you go back out and do some counting to justify some of the more, some of the more, some of the numbers that look way off base.
Well, one thing that we're going to do is, we've already started the 2007 counts. We're going to concentrate on the heavier, more heavily-traveled links first, like State Road 60 and US-1. So, we're going to have some current numbers to compare.
Good.
Pretty quickly. So, I think we'll be able to address that.
Good.
Good answer.
Final thing, this is, I want some encouragement from my fellow commissioners, and if I get it, I want to pursue something. I've heard a lot of people say that we need to improve the quality of projects that are being built, and I'm talking about inside the urban service line, not outside. The last couple of weeks, I've talked to several developers that have said there's a lot of room for improvement. And so, my thought is, and there's a lot of ways to go at this, is I'd like to come back with a specific proposal, perhaps doing, for the P&amp;Z to approve or disapprove, perhaps doing a workshop with panels, where we bring in developers, staff, perhaps a consultant or two, and we address the issue, ask that the question be addressed, how can projects be approved in the county. Mr. Paladin's group has done a lot. I don't think he's exhausted it, or I don't think he'd say he would, he would say he would. And I would come back with a proposal to perhaps have a panel, or panel discussions, in a workshop framework, where that, the topic is hopefully more narrow, but basically, how can you improve the quality of projects, subdivision developments, inside the urban service line. But I don't want to go down that path unless there's...
Let me ask a question, just for clarification, and you're speaking of something like an architectural review board, or improving architectural standards?
That could, those could be suggestions. One developer said to me that what we need is a peer review board.
Improving the appearance of the front entrances of subdivisions, that kind of thing?
Well, let's see what the people say. I mean, I think, I would think that the panels would have a number of local developers, local architects.
So, we would have, we got, we would go, they would have like a technical review, they would go through the technical review board, then they would come to the peer review, and then the peer, we would have there, and then it would come to us as...
I'm not proposing anything other than setting up, having a workshop where there's a panel of experts that come to us and say, here's the way you might be able to improve the projects that are being, one suggestion might be a peer review panel. It might not be. If it were, they could explain to you how it would work. I'm not, that isn't what I'm proposing. I'm proposing a workshop panel, where you had an open, freewheeling discussion from experts.
Well, I mean, we've had, I made the comment earlier about how much trouble it was to take some of these ideas and put them into black and white. I don't, I mean, I'm not...
You may have a more receptive commissioner.
Well, we may have, I, you know, but I mean, I just, it's not as easy. I mean, we may, the question would be, is if you're looking to, if you're headed one direction, or you're trying to get the input so that we improve our LDRs and get this in black and white, so it becomes a rule.
Oh, yes. I would think if it's, it would either be policy, or LDRs, or nothing. They might say our LDRs are fine, there's no need to do anything.
I would certainly support that in concept. I have one question, the staff, do you guys know?
Tom, how much time are we talking to staff?
I know, that's what I'm, do you guys know other communities that do stuff like this?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. There are, there are others. I can just tell you, we're coming off a two-year process of working on the landscape ordinance, and that'll be to you probably next month. And we are, we have been working on several architectural control. We've been working with the developer to get two-story home criteria, some design criteria that can be applied.
I think that's where George is heading, is the stuff about aesthetics and stories.
I mean, we keep touch bumping into things, but I mean, they are attempting to address them as they go.
You're putting words in my mouth. I have heard people say to me, our projects could be done far better. I don't know what they're talking about. That would be the purpose.
I certainly would support exploring it by, you know...
No, I think one aspect we could look at is building green, too, and I don't see, Mandela is coming in with some of that aspects, but in the paper the other day, Bivard is moving ahead on some of these issues, and I think we're a little behind. And I know there's about four or five groups out there that are concerned about this in our county, and I think they're going to be getting in touch with you, Stan.
If there's a, what I would do is talk to some people, I can't talk to any of you. I'll talk to some people. I'll come back with a concrete proposal, and you can say you ain't ever indifferent. On the other hand, if it's not something that you really want to go down, that you want to spend the time doing, it's too time-consuming, then tell me. There's no need to...
I support it, George.
I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with it. My concern would be cost, and I don't, I'm not hearing that there would probably be a lot of cost associated with it, but when you look at, when you listen to impact fee increases that we were, that were being talked about tonight, and the increased costs of homes, and the last time we met, we were talking about a project that I'm sure was bringing in all kinds of $5.50 hour, 50 cent an hour jobs.
It's six-something now, minimum.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They moved it up.
If there's any cost, well, it'll have to be approved by the county commission before it's over.
I understand.
If you retired, it went up.
Um, Tom, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. I think you've got at least a reasonable support from this board, so...
I'll come back with something concrete.
Something concrete.
Didn't want to tell you it's too much.
Right. Any other commissioner matters?
Are we going to discuss the water issue at all today, or is that just handed out for information?
I think we can do that under Planning Matters. So, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, actually, the water supply issues, we've got the EAR schedule, and we actually, I'm not sure what we start with in February, although 22nd is where we start coming to the Planning Zoning Commissioning. So, we've got, we've got quite a schedule for you all to look at, and water supply is going to be one of those, so that would be the better time to...
I noticed on your Schedule C, the Attachment C, I mean, the last page, second to the last page, the draft master plan was supposed to have been delivered yesterday?
I'm not, those, we put utili, that's utilities contract with them.
Have they said they got it, or?
I'm not sure.
Because you're going to have a public workshop on February 26th, only a month away.
Right, and that's, like I said, that's utilities.
And the final master plan is March 26th, so in two months, we're supposed to go through this whole thing for a final thing. So, I would hope that consultants produce this as they scheduled it.
Mr. Chairman, I just have six items to go over, but they're very brief. Just to let you know what's coming up, February 6th, the board is going to consider the Grand Harbor items that you all looked at. On February 9th, there's the US-1 workshop from 9:00 to noon. On February 13th, there are two appeals from your decisions. One is the Source, and the other is the Century Town Center Site Plan, so that'll be the February 13th, Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Which is the first?
I'm sorry?
Source.
The Source, yeah. February 15th, there's a joint meeting with Indian River County and St. Lucie County. I'm sorry, that's February 19th, and then we're going to look at Cloud Grove and a few other issues on that. February 15th is a school concurrency meeting at the Richardson Center. And the last item is, I have, as promised, for each of you and Ariel of the county, with the urban service area boundary and the municipal boundaries and roads labeled on it, so you can have a picture of the county, and might help you get the big picture as you look at the, the EAR and everything else that you'll be going through. So, just something to take, so make sure that you have the big picture before you leave. That's all that I had, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, Stan, you said there was something between the Grand Harbor and the Source. What was that?
The...
Grand Harbor was the 6th, the Source was the 19th. You said something in between was?
The US-1 workshop on February 9th.
February 1st.
February 9th, yeah.
Okay. Is that it for planning? Attorney matters?
A couple of weeks ago, the Board of County Commissioners talked about how we might better serve the Planning Commission, and the suggestion was made that you be given not just a recommendation, but maybe alternatives, and that if there was some legal review that, if I saw any issues, I might write short memos about it. We made a run at that this time. You might have noticed that some of the agenda items were signed off for legal sufficiency, others weren't. I did write a couple of memos. Bob thought they were more directed toward technical matters like right-of-way requirements. One of them, I wrote on the night issue that you didn't see, but it did track some of the conversation tonight about the State Road 60 advance funding, and whether that's really in place yet. It was difficult because your packet deadline is Friday afternoon, and I was getting the agenda items Friday morning and trying to work it out. In the future, we're going to try and block out half a day, the Thursday before your packets go out, so if I have comments, the planning staff will have time to either modify their recommendations, add some alternatives, or attach a legal memo from me if there's some issues that aren't really getting resolved. So, we're going to try and implement that suggested process, and we'll have to go through a few fits and starts and see how we can do it.
I think that's going to be very helpful. I really do. I think it'll be, I applaud you, Will, for, and I would urge that you go on the side of sharing with us your memorandum or your writings, unless they're really trivial. And you wouldn't write if they're really trivial, so, but it would be well to know that everything that comes to us has gone through you.
Well, it always has in the past, but usually what happens is, if I see something, I'll call up the planners in the afternoon. They'll explain away my concern, or they'll pass out an addendum that night to address it. That's, but it's been last stage in Sabrosa, and if you want something that's a little more obvious, we can do that.
I think we're adjourned.
Well, you come over here where I can hear you. Come over here where I can hear...